Mr. Chairman, Ms. Bryan emailed me and says she cannot make the meeting today. And Mr. Yeager said he cannot make the meeting.
All right, thank you, Mr. Butler. All right, this time, let's call our meeting, this special meeting to order. We have two items today. First is solid waste services, bid number 1314-15. Secondly, we'll be with Mr. Nelson here with the river flooding. So, Mr. Butler, I'm going to turn this over to you and we'll address, A, the solid waste services first.
Thank you, my chairman. This is to do with bid 1314-15. We are P for garbage services. We're at the end of our five-year contract with Waste Management. We had a pre-bid conference on April 3rd. We had three vendors that participated in the pre-bid conference. We received proposals from two vendors, one being Waste Management, our current contractor, and then Waste Pro. And we gave you a sheet, or in the handout, you can see all the spreadsheet, all the points. There's several dozen prices that each vendor had to give us on certain things. And we've gone through that and studied them. And the committee took what was in doubt and proposed, and we discussed. And for example, one was, they gave us a price for transfer station, for picking up garbage in Gulf County with Gulf County, City of Port St. Joe, the city of Weewall, and possibly running transfer station. Also, we had it priced out individually with Gulf County by itself, Port St. Joe by itself, Weewall by itself, and also had it priced out without transfer station. And so, we wound up with probably well over 100 price points they had to put in place in order for us to determine which way we wanted to go. After looking at all the prices, the committee met, the staff committee met, and we have made a recommendation to the board that the board would look at transfer station to do what we want to do, to solve a problem that we have. One of our problems is, we're going out and picking up yard debris. And also, we're closing a landfill. The county commission has made a conscious decision not to expand the landfill. So, if we don't get a vendor to build the transfer station, we'll have to build a transfer station. So, this was one of the points. And the numbers come in pretty good on transfer station, we think. So, our recommendation to you is that we look at the prices. We can go through every price on the sheets if the board wants to. The committee's recommendation is that we look at operating a transfer station, that we look at, right now, the current price for subscription to Gulf County, unincorporated Gulf County. That would include garbage pickup once a week, yard debris pickup, and the option to recycle at the transfer station. And we chose the option to recycle at the transfer station over curbside because historically, not most people use curbside recycling, we think, in the numbers, a lot of difference in the numbers. So, if the board will take the parameters that the committee came up with, then this sheet, this sheet with the green and the blue on it comes into play. The other sheet, the spreadsheet, has all the numbers for with transfer station and without transfer station, for Waste Management and for Waste Pro. And, Mr. Chairman, to get into this, we had a pre-bid conference, and I think the pre-bid conference was well received by all in attendance. We took questions and comments, and later on that day, the next day, Lynn, she put all those answers. We answered most of them then. We had to come up with answers some later. We sent all that back out to all three vendors that attended the pre-bid conference. Subsequent to that, we received two proposals, and one, Waste Pro Waste Management. The committee determined that both, without doubt, both are reputable firms, firms of good standard. The point of contact for each firm are great, superior. Both, we've been dealing with Lynn with Waste Management, and Waste Pro, we've been dealing with Rick when Rick worked with Waste Management, and he was our point of contact for years. And so, they're represented by some good people. And so, we got down to the point of trying to distinguish from one to the other. And really and truly, the only difference we see is in the numbers, bottom line numbers. And so, if the board would take the committee's recommendation to look at, just focus in on transfer station. If we don't focus in on transfer station, we'll have to pay some other money out later on. To give you an idea, and I do have a sheet here, Joe's not here, our solid waste director is not here today, but he worked up some numbers for me, and I think I've got them here. Just for the two limb trucks, one-year operation of two limb trucks, fuel, not talking about personnel, not talking about repair, we're only talking about fuel. The two limb trucks cost you $57,000 a year.
Each or both?
Both, the total, $57,000 fuel. And what we're looking at is trying to contract with a vendor to pick up yard debris. There is a definition of yard debris, how much that's going to be, what length is, what the yardage is. But if we could focus in on transfer station, that could solve one of our problems, a lot of our problems. No intent, from the committee, no intent of any change of personnel. I bet you those people working a landfill would wind up in public works, because we need them in public works. The attrition you may get, they may drop off to the roster, but no other way. We're not talking about any reduction in personnel, just simply put them back over in public works. And it'll take a pretty good period of time to do that, to get a transfer station up and going. And it'll probably take the rest of the year. It's wild, wild numbers on getting it up and going. But if the board would consider what we put in front of you, transfer station, a pickup once a week with yard debris and recycling at the transfer station, if you want to, if you want to do that, we can go through those numbers. And the sheet I gave you with the blue and green, the green represents Waste Management's numbers, the blue represents Waste Pro's numbers. And if you go left top, garbage only, garbage and yard debris, garbage, yard debris, option for recycling at curbside, garbage, yard debris, and option for recycling at transfer station. So, that's the numbers we're looking at. And you can see Waste Management numbers for garbage, yard debris, and option recycling at transfer station, $27.57 a month. The same thing for Waste Pro was $23.25 per month. The second two columns to the right, and that's more than these first two columns, but the second two columns is county-wide single payer, which would not come into play today. We would like to reserve the ability to go to these points at some point in time. If the county ever put garbage on the tax bill, then the right two columns will come into play. And for the same thing, garbage, yard debris, and option for recycling at transfer station for Waste Management would be $26.26, and same thing for Waste Pro would be $20.25. So, the difference in the rates for Waste Management and Waste Pro for that. But if we go back to the first column, and this, we have garbage only, garbage and yard debris, garbage and yard debris, and option for recycling at curbside, garbage and yard debris recycling, option recycling at transfer station, twice-a-week pickup in tourist corridor, twice-a-week pickup in tourist corridor year-round. We got the percentage increase. You see on Waste Management is CPI, wherever CPI is, and then Waste Pro is 2%. For the last 11 years, we run the numbers, the CPI has increased about 2 and 1/4 percent on the average over the last 11 years. Got prices for the bare resistant containers, discount rate for seniors and disabled, amnesty day, backdoor service, the amount that each vendor would pay Gulf County to allow out of county debris to come into county and be transferred out to be handled. Those rates are there. So, and then the commercial rates at the bottom of the page and on the second page. And any of those that the board wants to go through, but let me say again, the committee recommended we go to garbage, yard debris, and option to recycle at the transfer station. That's your 1, 2, 3, fourth line down from the top. And that would be true whether we go subscription service or county-wide single payer. So, based on this, Mr. Chairman, the bottom line, the best price is Waste Pro.
Sure. Mr. McMoRoe.
Let me make sure I understand this correctly now, because... If we're looking at what the committee wants to do, if we combine garbage pickup and yard debris, we're looking at $27.57?
And the option to recycle at the transfer station. Waste Management, $27.57 per month. Waste Pro, $23.25 per month, in the blue column to the right.
And that's... Okay, on the yard debris pickup, is that once a week, county-wide?
This would be unincorporated Gulf County. The number we're talking about today is unincorporated Gulf County's numbers, and yes.
So, they're going to come into District 1, my district, all the way through my district, once a week, and pick up yard debris, correct?
Yes, defined. It's no more than four feet long, nothing bigger around than five-inch diameter, it's not put wood, and it's typically yard debris. Now, if someone has something greater than that, or white goods, or whatever, then they have to take that to transfer station.
And that's at $23.25 for both of them?
Yes, sir.
If they do just garbage, what is the garbage?
At the very top line...
On a senior citizen, what's the garbage on a senior citizen? What's the garbage pickup on a senior citizen?
Well, okay, the break is Waste Management would give a $0.50 per month break for senior citizens, and Waste Pro would give a dollar break. So, it'd be $1 off of that.
What is that now? What's the total?
In the future, if the county commission were to go put the garbage on the tax bill, you can move over to the right column and for $20.25 a month.
Okay, here's the problem with this, gentlemen. We need to look at this now. Right now, senior citizens paying, okay, $17 a month. If we go with the garbage and yard debris, then their garbage bill is going up to $23.25, correct?
Yes.
This is $6.
$22.20.
That's $7. In other words, where we're furnishing free, call it free right now, we're actually going to increase the garbage when we do the garbage debris pickup.
Yeah, it'd be garbage and debris pickup, yeah.
It's not my election year, fellas, it's y'all's. You need to look at this. And I don't know about you, fellas, but I can tell you, I get calls daily about yard debris, yard debris, you know. They put it out there, they don't want it to lay out there a week, maybe two weeks. They want it gone. They got leaves piled up. You get a windstorm, it's blowing the leaves up right back where they clean them up at. I'm just throwing all this out here, you know, for everybody to look at. I was hoping, at the end of the day, we could get these garbage bills down some. But from what I'm seeing here, it's really, it's really not.
This fuel on the very right column, if you were to place it, you can't do it this year, can't be done this year, but next year or future year, if you were to place it on a tax roll, you can get once-a-week pickup, yard debris, and option to recycle for $20.25 per month, put a dollar off, would be $19.25 per month for seniors. That's the line down on the right column. Can't do it this year. It was too late this year to do it, but...
I just know, gentlemen, I'm telling y'all, because I deal with a lot of senior citizens that's on a fixed income, and I'm telling y'all, a dollar a month makes a difference, whether they can buy their medication or not. And we're going to get hammered on this. When we raise that garbage bill up, we're going to get hammered on it.
This is county, does not include the city. The cities may or may not go with Waste Management. We certainly would want to reserve the right to take those price points if either city or both cities got on Waste Pro, if you went with Waste Pro. We want to be able to use those lower numbers, the numbers are somewhat lower, if everybody worked together on it. No guarantee they're going to or not going to, we don't know what they're going to do. So, it was bid, it was pick and choose. We could take ours, or everybody get on for a lower number. But City of St. Joe's got to do what's best for them, we've always got to do what's best for Weewall. Only thing we really have control over is what, the unincorporated numbers.
If we don't do the yard debris, if we, garbage only, the seniors, is that $17.74 that I'm looking at and $18?
If you only did garbage, then yes, $17.74 and $18 is the two numbers. $17.74 is Waste Management, $18 is Waste Pro.
What is, what's for a senior now? Garbage only.
Ask a few questions. Good.
Let her get that number for us.
While we wait. While we're waiting on Ms. Lanier, we'll just have a little round robin here, you might say. But let's just say, Mr. Butler, will this county, we make the decision of whether we go on with door 1, 2, or 3, or say, Mr. Nelson here, he just wants garbage only. Hey, we're talking about outside the county. My personal feelings is, I don't, I'd love to see us the two municipalities, but I wouldn't bet my money on it if they would go into this, because the city of Weewahidka is free limb and leaf pickup, they don't charge, so they've got a good PowerPoint there. But just, let me finish here. But we make the decision whether you use door 1, 2, or 3, or can Mr. Nelson, if he just wants garbage, he selects that, and if Ms. Manuel, she wants garbage and yard debris, can she elect that, can you shed me some light right there?
Okay, it was our intent for the board to pick one and go with it.
So, we would make the decision.
If the individual vendor determined they could do something different, that would be left up to them. But the reason we figured we'd go with one, hopefully at some point in time, going down the road in fifty years, put on a tax roll, and it would be hard to put garbage pickup on a tax roll for one, and garbage and debris for someone else, and that's changing all the time.
The board would make this decision. I just asked that question, I already went over this. So, Mr. Nelson here would have to comply with what the board selected.
Yeah, unless, when you award today, if you award today, what it does, that turns us loose to negotiate with whoever you award to. And if that vendor were to determine that, at this point in time, they could recognize different rates, I mean, that'd be fine, but we intended to be one rate.
One rate. Now, presently, I know the city of Weewahidka, which I'm more familiar with, and I feel like the city of St. Joe is the same thing, they do their billing. The county, we do not do billing. I know I'm in the county, I pay mine every three months to Waste Management, they're my provider, so they bill me, and I pay them, I don't know, $54, somewhere, pay them every three months, or once a week, one container. All right, let me back off now, Mr. Butler here.
The current rates for seniors with Waste Management is $17.74, so there's no price increase.
Wait a minute.
The current rate with Waste Management is $17.74 for seniors, $18.24 for regular residents, $0.50 rebate for seniors.
So, we haven't done anything here as far as to help me and my people, honestly, and I'm not being mean or ugly with this, we haven't lowered rates at all that I was hoping that we would get lowered on this negotiation.
Yes, sir.
Eighteen and twenty-four with a $0.50 discount for seniors.
Residential rate is eighteen twenty-four and a $0.50 discount.
And if we, and gentlemen, if we go with the package deal with the yard debris, then, you know, we're going to raise their garbage bill, bottom line, $6, $7.
Mr. Chairman, just a moment, let me, Mr. McMoRoe.
I don't like it. I know y'all worked hard with this, y'all dedicated, I know times is tough, but I was hoping, truly, really and truly hoping to see a decrease in our garbage bills. And me personally, I go and lay it out on the table. I'm not for this yard debris pickup. We can eat that, we can buy that, I know we have trucks to buy, I know we have employees, but I'm not for putting it on the people.
Mr. Chairman, I was not on the committee, but this is something we've talked about for years. This is going to get the county, Avroam taxpayer, out of the garbage business. So, if we don't take the committee's recommendation and do the yard debris, the county get out of it, and the transfer station, the county's going to build the transfer station. I think the estimates are all over the board, but about $600,000 that we have to find to build that transfer station. So, either we're going to be half in and half out, and the Avroam taxpayer is still going to be on the hook, because we still have to haul that stuff to Panama when we get that transfer station. In these scenarios, they would handle it, it'd be lock and key. They'd pick it up, they'd haul it to Panama. We wouldn't be hauling it to Panama, paying the tipping fee and running the transfer station. The provider would. So, yes, it is an increase over the existing deal, but they're going to get an increase of service, too. One, they're going to get weekly roadside pickup where they don't have any schedule now. Some pick it up regularly, some never get it picked up. So, I mean, there is an increase of service, and it is a huge benefit to the Avroam taxpayer that is going to be out of the solid waste business, except for the long-term monitoring of the existing landfills.
I'm on this agree with you on the increase of service. These boys do a good job in my district, I know, and they're on top of it, you know.
And when I say that, I'm not sliding that, but just like at my house. I don't get roadside pickup at my house. I mean, and everybody can, and we only have two trucks, so I mean, if it's, in this case, if I rake my leaves, I can get weekly roadside pickup.
So, we're going to every week, then whenever I get that phone call, ordinarily, I just, I call it in on a work order. So, whenever, and I get those all during the week. So, we go this route, and I got to call Ms. Lynn, I got to call Rick, you know. They may do a good service with it, probably will, but I don't know that. I know our service now is real good. That's what I know. And I know I'm looking at $7 a month increase for these seniors especially, on their garbage bill. I'm telling you, we're going to get slammed with this.
Chairman, on that roadside debris, I know in my district right now, they sell four-by-four pile, that's what they mean by four-by-four, but just say if somebody got an eight-by-four, what is their next, what is they being charged? What's the extra charge being put on?
If you have more than what is defined as yard debris, you'd have to carry it to the transfer station.
What I'm saying, just say, everything that they got in their pile meets the standards that we asking for, but they just got more than what it's supposed to be.
There's a limit, there's a limited amount. If you've got more in a pile than what they would pick up, I'm exaggerating, if you put a dump truck load there, they won't pick it up. But there's got to be within a defined amount for them, for a vendor to pick it up.
I know in my district right now with the city, there are lots of complaints from citizens who put stuff on the side of the road, and they say it's too much for them to pick up. And now, they either the city going to charge them for picking it up, an extra charge on top, they already got to pay, or someone else got to come get it for them.
I don't know.
That's the problem that we have in the district right now, up under the city with that.
We don't have that problem now. You know, they cut a oak tree down, pile of pile of limb, dump truck. According to them, that may be Waste Management or Waste Pro to have. I think we're opening up a county.
Number one, we haven't got a reduction. We haven't got a reduction on our costs, on our garbage. And number two, whenever you step into the debris, it gets even worse with that. Oh, you're adding $7.
Mr. Chairman, just one more follow-up. I think the county attorney's got a lot of things. I just want to remind the board, because I see it from the budget side, again, I wasn't on the committee. But the way we've done it in the past is going to end, no matter how we go, just simply because of this, and just use your example. When we close that landfill, and Joe's already working on it, it's coming in the next few months, we're going to stop hauling things to our landfill, we're going to close that landfill, and we're going to haul everything to Bay County. When you pull up there with a dump truck load of oak limbs, and it's 50 tons or 40 tons, you're going to get a $1,400 bill, or whatever it is for the landfill. So, I mean, we have to physically pay that money out to whoever we're hauling it to, the Bay County incinerator or whatever. So, the county's not going to be able to pick up unlimited, unless you budget for it. Not going to be able to pick up unlimited roadside debris again, because we're going to physically write a check to somebody we're hauling it to instead of just burying it in the landfill. So, I mean, that's, either way, when y'all got out of the landfill business last year, agreed to close the landfill, that's going to change. Somebody's going to have a bill to pay every time they dump, whether it's the city of St. Joe, whether it's the county, whether whoever. So, we just think about that, too.
Okay, I would rather say, honest and truthful with you, me personally... Okay, I, I would rather see honest and truthful way, and me personally, I would rather see us get out of the yard debris pickup completely and handle garbage only than to go with what we have in here in front of us. Let me, thing is, alright, hold on, we'll come back. Let me, let me, uh, been on the budget committee for the last two years and again this year. By going to, my big issue here and is fact that going to the transfer station, if right today, their children has not even been conceived, more than likely be paying for the monitoring of five points out here. Look what we in and buck on, it's been closed, I don't know how many years in the county, how many thousand every year we have to put up to continue. Now then we picked up a problem up there that's possibly, it's leaching in toward the Dead Lake, it's going to the east and we're going to have to set up more monitoring stations. I'm far getting the garbage out of there. We don't need another one. Like I said, this, and if we wait another five or seven years with the five points, if we continue like we are, if we just kicking the ball down to our grandchildren or somebody's gonna have to, uh, pay years after it's closed. So this is a step to get us out of debris, uh, you know, garbage, uh, transfer it all out. I'm there. Now, Commissioner Mclemore, I'll have to agree with you, but in one terms though, again, this county, uh, as Mr. Danford ran the numbers on the fuel for those two trucks, we're, and now that doesn't count the hydraulics, the manpower, tires or whatever. We're probably, this is a, a free service that the taxpayers, who I pay taxes in this county, are having to foot the bill for people that don't. Now, if we go to this, uh, system here, right now where I live, the county will not, they can't come, I'm on private property. Yes, you got a easement to drive down my road, but it's not a county road. So if I had any debris, I've got to physically take it out to a right of way. Now, I don't know here if, uh, Waste Management or Waste Pro, which they come down once a week to my resident and pick up. But I put my debris there. Could they, could they go on pri, they come on private property now or to pick up garbage? And same way as the Sheriff's Deputies, National Lingo, or the paper people or whoever goes on these, where we can't. We've got, I had a gentleman over the weekend and wanted to put some debris, called me. I said, well, don't lay it right in the bottom of the ditch because, you know, with this rain we're having. I said, just put it, uh, on the backside and our truck can reach there and get it. But we've been providing a free service here, the taxpayers has, on this limb pickup and a lot of people got spoiled on this. I mean, a lot of people has got spoiled, really have. So I'm looking for the transfer station. We need that. We need to get out of this landfill business that we're in. But I don't know, Commissioner Mclemore, if we can negotiate these numbers, I don't know if the city of Weewahidka will come on board and the city of St. Joe, I don't know. The more they can get on, then probably they can notch it down a little bit. But I see what you're talking about. We're gonna, let's go with Waste Management. If we go with, which one would it be, Mr. Butler? Number four or number three?
Number four.
Alright, we're gonna go with number four and we'll, uh, we'll use both Waste Management and, uh, Waste Management for, for number four, which is garbage, yard debris and option of recycling at transfer station. Twenty-seven fifty-seven for Waste Management and twenty-three twenty-five for Waste Pro. Where if you, right now, they're cans only, uh, Waste Management is showing what seventeen seventy-four here proposed monthly. We're gonna talk monthly. And, uh, Waste Pro for eighteen dollars. Then you said, what was the senior citizen discount or what was the senior discount?
Uh, one dollar for Waste Pro, fifty cent for Waste Management.
Waste Management. So it'd be seventeen dollars versus twenty-two dollars. Well, no, you knock off with the seniors. It's a five dollar increase, seventeen to twenty-three, twenty-five dollars in a quarter increase. Then that would put us out of the, we would, uh, in this fuel would go down, those two trucks would come off of the road. Am I, is, is that correct, Mr. Butler?
Well, for what we're doing today, you'll probably always use those trucks for one thing or another in the landfill or, well, not in the landfill. But, uh, also what'll come off the road is the multiple trips, um, for instance, um, one, say one day in a day's time, we, we've got one that makes like five trips to the, to the landfill. One van, inmate work crew van makes five trips to the landfill. And that, that being Mr. Smalice. Um, out on the beach, uh, where I live, uh, those will make like a couple trips to the landfill. So the intent was, it's a little more overall than what we talked about this morning. One is, that's just the numbers on the, on limb trucks is substantial.
We hadn't factored in the inmate crew.
The inmate crew, and what it do, determine inmate crews, solution doing other things, you know, cutting grass and, you know, digging ditches, whatever they need to do, um, other than, uh, picking up limbs. And, and that, that too. And, and part of what we based on was the county commissioner already voted not to, not to look for a permit or seek a permit to expand the landfill. If you don't get a permit to expand the landfill, that means you're going into transfer business. And if you go into transfer business, then that means you gotta build a transfer station, you gotta haul it and you gotta, you gotta deal with someone to get, either at a landfill or incinerator, get rid of that material. And probably the landfill. So just based on what the board already done, that's the reason we took the track we took. Looks like you, you're gonna go into the transfer business one way or the other, whether it be a vendor or we run it.
Now.
And, and two, the, the best price would be if the board ever went over to placing on a tax bill, can't be done this year, but next year it could be. And then for twenty dollars and twenty-five cent per month, Don Butler could get once a week pickup, yard debris pickup and option to recycle at a transfer station. And if I live for a couple more years, I can get a dollar off that from twenty twenty-five down to nineteen twenty-five per month.
Okay. And, and that's my question, Don. How long is this, would this contract be for?
Well, it's a five-year contract with option to renew for three, two more terms. So it could be eleven years.
Okay. My next question is a, are they a increase in those five-year period?
That's, um, uh, listing on the percentage increase here, six through seven, it's about midway of the sheet. And, and, and both are pretty much in line, CPI and two percent is gonna be pretty close, but about two percent increase.
Yep. How much is that dollar wise? For the first year, it's, uh, if, for the first year, just say Waste Pro's twenty-three, twenty-five, second year, what's, what's it going to be?
It's pretty about forty-five cent increase.
Forty-five cent. At the end of the five years, what's it gonna be?
I need to get my calculator out, but you can, you can add probably fifty cent a year for the next several years.
How much, fifty cents a year for the next five years up to two dollars and a half? Y'all need to sit down with me. I'd negotiate with y'all. I was truly hoping to see a decrease in our garbage. We didn't see it. Well, Commissioner, it's a check and balance system. We go up here, two dollars, but the taxpayers drop five dollars. So there's a question. Right now, the tax, the taxpayers are footing the bill, like on the limb pickup and, uh, everything out there. But Waste, uh, Management or Waste Pro, either one of them, when they set this transfer station up, we won't be operating it. They will. They'll build it, they'll, uh, uh, hire the personnel, they'll operate it. It'll be their trucks. We won't have. Probably this morning, we've got a truck on the way to Steel Field, probably, or one or two this week going to Panama. We collect sixty dollars a ton. They charge us a hundred and forty over there. So every time when we send a truck to Panama, it's costing the taxpayers money. It is. So yes, everybody picks up a little, but then that thirty-two or whatever percentage of the property owners in this county, they get a little, you know, they get a little reduction. You know, it's just spreading it around a little. That's what, that's the way I look at it, uh. And two, I just assume myself, everybody, you know, they've got an annual rate over here where they could tack it on. I'd pay, uh, let's say, well, we're gonna go with Waste Management. They would be, uh, if we elected number four, I'd just pay two hundred ninety-one dollars and thirty cents, you know, this initial time, and they wouldn't, I'd never get billed anymore. I'd save myself a fifty cent stamp. But we gonna start counting pennies. Here's the problem with that, Mr. Backdaddy. Here's the problem with that. You're a lot better off than some of our senior citizens out there. They can't afford to pull three hundred dollars out of their pocket. One year. I agree. Up, up some to pay a garbage bill. They can't do it. It's only seven hundred dollars a month, some of them, five hundred dollars a month. You know, I agree. Probably, the best option is, is probably to turn it, the whole package deal. I meant the limb debris pickup, the whole, the garbage, the whole nine yards. I just don't like the seven dollar increase it's gonna cost the people. You know, I'd rather do away completely with the yard debris and handle garbage only. Alright, okay, uh.
Yep, the only thing I'd want to add on the, on the other side is either way, whether, whether you include it in, in the package as proposed or not, unless the county changes its course, you're gonna be out of the, the debris pickup business anyway. And this is a lot cheaper alternative than hiring, hiring a private contractor for individuals to go because the county, unless you change course. The county stays with, whether the county stays, it'd be horrible plan, but if the county ran their own transfer station, the county's still gonna stop picking up roadside debris. Or you're gonna budget a half million dollars a year in tipping fees for all the crap you gonna haul. Because you still can't, you can't use your work crews to pick up free garbage and then pay a hauler to haul it to Panama and pay sixty, seventy dollars a ton. It will bankrupt the county. So either way, we're out of the roadside pickup business. If you, if you, when you, when you voted to close the landfill, eventually, when we do that, you're out of the roadside because we can't afford it. I mean, that's, so either way, it's going away. If you don't provide this service, the county's not gonna provide it unless you change course. So I mean, so it's really not, it's not an option on that side if you, if you're gonna do the transfer station, whether we run it or not. This by far is the best option.
I've got an option.
I understand. We just have to budget for it and it would be astronomical, so.
Anything else, Hammond? So. Okay, let me ask another thing. Alright, so we put in, we're gonna put in a transfer station. And, uh, the, uh, did, did I see or did I, Waste Management, were you, uh, you going, you bid to put in a transfer station or was that, was that left off the table? I know Waste Pro did, but I can't remember. I was looking through your, uh, do what?
Both did.
Both did. That's, I was thinking, okay, okay. So we'll switch over to Waste Pro now. We use Waste Man, let's go to Waste Pro. Waste Pro has, has put in this transfer station. And we continue to stay with our limb trucks. When we pull up there, they're gonna charge us. Am I correct? They'll charge us just like any, just like any John Doe. Only difference, whatever we paid them would be not what we're having to pay. All of it's not going out. Some things has to go to Bay County. It can't be in our landfill, which we're taking now. So that's something we gotta look at right there too. They're gonna charge us just like in, in, uh, if any, I don't know who has Franklin County and they might decide to bring all Franklin County's, uh, uh, materials here, then the county would absorb, we get a little profit off of that. Same way with Bay County. I don't know, they may bring Calhoun. I don't know this. I'm not in this business. It's, it's a big business. It's used to be what, but today it's big business, big business. But, uh, Mr. Mclemore, I see your, your point here. If, if we just stayed with garbage only, it's not gonna char, change hardly any. Not any at all. And that's what I'm so disappointed. None there, but we've got to the county, we can't let each, uh, uh, person in the county pick according to what Mr. Butler's saying. We've got to decide which of these, uh, we, and we're looking down here at option four. If we go back up to option, uh, well, is it, uh, say we went with option two and let's just use, uh, let's go back now to Waste Management. If we go with option two, they twenty-seven thirteen and option four is twenty-seven fifty-seven. So there's only what forty cent or less increase there, Waste Management between two. So anytime we step over, if we take the first one, garbage only, that's it. Anything two, three, four down, you're gonna have an increase from either one. Either one, you're gonna have that. Now, did I hear you correctly that it's a five-year and then two, three years? So we're talking about a possibly eleven-year, up to a, where did I see it? A twenty, saw it in here somewhere, possibly a twenty-five-year deal, but anytime with this transfer station, if we elect to just continue with, uh, uh, Waste Pro, then we have to buy that piece of equipment at fair market price. Am I correct there? Okay, alright, Mr. Attorney, let's.
Mr. Chairman, those terms will be negotiated and written into the contract.
Do what?
Those terms will be negotiated with the vendor and put into the contract. So if it's the commission's election to choose with a transfer station, which is the recommendation of your committee, then you'll narrow the scope. County will engage that vendor and that will be negotiated out. But if there's a construction of a, uh, transfer station out at the site and Mr. Danford has talked with the committee, he was at the mandatory pre-bid conference. If the county obviously has that constructed out there through a vendor, that will be put in the terms of the contract, be it a five-year contract or it's three, two-year renewals up to, up to eleven years. So upon the expiration of that contract with this county, there'll be negotiated terms in the front end of the contract for the acquisition of that transfer station.
Okay. Okay, Michael, another question or two here. If we go with garbage only, just if, and I get a constituent that has a truckload of limbs, where does he take them to? Because they're gonna have to do something with them. Unless, if we go with garbage only, they're still, they're gonna be responsible for their debris. Where would they take it to?
Well, today, to the landfill. Um, when we get a transfer in place, then they'd be carrying to the transfer station and they'd be paying the market rates at the transfer station.
Our transfer station?
Yeah.
Whoever builds it.
Yeah, it, it, what it is, you've already made a decision to build a transfer station. And either you're gonna build it and the county's gonna run it or either a vendor's gonna build it and they're gonna run it. And ea, either way, either way, if we run it or a vendor runs, if we continue to haul, for, on that sheet I gave you, the two trucks per year is taking in thirty-eight hundred tons of debris. That means when it gets to Panama City or gets to Jackson County, we gotta pay a tipping fee. Today, it was, it's under radar. You don't see what that costs, what that really costs you was two hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars per year for those two trucks. If you, once we get a transfer station in place and you already made a decision to go transfer station and no matter who runs it, that one item alone, those two trucks can cost you two hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars per year additional tipping that you're not, you're not paying today. And so the idea is that Don doesn't pile his trash on the side of the road in, in large amounts. In, in controlled amounts, the vendor will pick it up, put it on their truck. But if I cut pine trees down and got put wood on the side of the road, I've gotta get it to the transfer station and I get to pay my tipping fee.
And, and this is where I have a little negative with this.
And this is where I have a little negative with this, you know, the amount that we put outside the road, you know, are you just going to pick up a bucket full? You can't pick it up, you can't get the complete job done. We don't do any land clearing now, but there's times that we have a good dump truck load, you know, to where they cut a big tree down, a huge tree down. And I'd, you know, I don't like the way it's set up here, where we're just going to pick up a handful. I don't like that. You know, if we're going to do this, let's do it all within reason, what I'm saying. Uh, really, and I hate this, but if you look at it, gentlemen, the way I see it, and the way the counties set up today with a transfer station down the road, and then the garbage, the whole nine yards, honestly, if you look at the whole package deal here, 2325 with Waste Pro, I don't like it, but it looks like that's, to me, that's our best route.
What I see with the garbage, though, I see a lot more fire being built in the town. So that's going to force an issue on our, this, I can see that coming along, because I mean, if I was in the county, I had too much for you to pick up, just to haul it.
And then if you go back to it, you know, and you just do away with the yard debris completely. Say, we're not going to pick it up anymore. We're out of the business. I guarantee you that family is going to find a way to burn a lot of that stuff, you know, the limbs, their leaves, or whatever. I don't know, gentlemen, I don't know what route to go.
You said we getting out of the business? I guarantee you, there's going to be a lot of trash and stuff put on the side of the road.
We're going to have to get out of the business.
You're going to have...
Somebody's going to throw a mattress between point A and point B, and who's going to go get it? All right, Mr. Butler, you, Mr. McLemore, Commissioner McLemore, you. All right, let's go here.
I think, just a comment. We can't expect this to happen overnight. You can't flip a switch to make it work. It'll probably be first of the year, this is April, it's probably going to be first of the year before it levels out. And it's going to take a while to build a transfer station. Two, it's going to take a while to educate everyone. And I know this, I've been living on Central Beach over 50 years. It has, the community has not looked as good since 1992 or 1991, because we started what we call spring cleanup. Since spring cleanup, it's got our hand, and tool sheds and everything else is piled up on the side of the road. And eventually, we get tired of looking at them. We wind up picking it up, even though we only pick up yard debris. It'll take a while to educate the people to get to the point of, you can only put what's defined here, and that yard waste needs to be bagged or bundled with limits of four feet in length. There's a definition of yard waste, or what we negotiate out with a vendor. But at some point in time, I think it'll come together. If we continue to pick up what we've been picking up, and this is where the committee has come from, um, it's going to be unaffordable. You lose a half million dollars a year now in landfill, you're talking about more than that.
So you just tell them, you just told me that it's going to have to be bagged, the leaves, the debris?
If Don puts a pile of leaves, no vendor's going to come by and pick up loose leaves on the ground. It's got to be, got to be bagged. So what happens? Don probably put his leaves in bag, yard, burn them, or make compost out of them.
Mr. Butler, you think?
That's it.
What we're trying to do is lay some groundwork for the future. I'll be out of here, and we'll all be out of here, but we're just trying to go ahead and lay the groundwork now for the future, 25 years from now. And it'll eventually happen. DEP and all these, what is it, Sierra Club out there now, they worried about a cow on a Nevada ranch because of a turtle. Well, the coyote's eating his legs off. Cow's not hurting him, but they trying to lay it on the old cow. He really helps him. But this is for the future. We've got, we've got to cross this bridge irregardless, and that's what we're trying to do now, get ahead of it, because we can kick it on down the road five or seven years, but it's going to come right back. Sooner or later, we'll be forced to address it, and it may cost us a lot more then. I know, I don't, everybody, you know, a lot of people in this county, they are on tight budgets and all. But this is something that we, sometimes you just have to bite the bullet. I like it, no, but is it something that needs to be done? Yes. And that's what we've got to do. It's a hard, it's a hard thing, you know, the free pickup, free pickup, but, you know, that's tax dollars, big time tax dollars. And where we go, that's what this is all about. You got it.
All right, Mr. McDaniel, I hear you, and I agree with you. You know, it's hard to bite the bullet, but it looks like we're going to have to. And with that being said, it looks like to me now, unless I'm wrong with this, that Waste Pro has the best bid, 2325, and I would make a motion that we support Waste Pro with a 2325.
Okay, hold you. All right. That's what, that's the garbage, garbage, breeze, and options for recycling. Transfer station and option. All right, let me go to the attorney just a minute. You do have a motion, is a motion proper now?
It is, Mr. Chairman. I'd ask Commissioner McLemore, the committee obviously going through the whole process. I wasn't a member of the committee, but I sat in with them. If you all can make a motion to accept the recommendations of the committee to narrow the scope, obviously there's a very thorough presentation and specs. If you would make two motions, which would be, one, to accept the recommendations of the committee for number four, as you've defined it, that that would be, I know Mr. Danford's not here, but he had expressed it to the administrator and to that committee, that that was his recommendation as well, to accept the recommendations for the scope as your first motion, which is the services. And then the second would be with regards to the vendor and the price that you are seeking to secure.
Okay, good. Yes, sir.
I hear what you said, uh, option for recycle. That recycle, that go to the company that's doing the recycle, will that come to Gulf County?
Let Mr. Butler answer this, Commissioner.
Historically, recycling has been a losing proposition. It'll go to the company.
Okay, my motion then would be, let me go ahead and re-clear my motion just a little bit, Mr. Chairman, to follow the committee's recommendation. Is that all I need, Mr. Attorney, on that?
With regards to number four, that's correct, the scope of services with transfer.
With regards to number four, of services. That's correct, Mr. Attorney.
The committee's all here, but yeah, that was my understanding that that was unanimous recommendation of the committee that they would recommend that you go with that.
You got it.
All right, that'd be my motion there.
Just, not the number yet. We're just focusing on the recommendations of the committee that the commission can ratify, what going forward you're looking for in terms of your services. No, it's, we're going to get to that next, Commissioner. We're going to do that very next.
I have a motion for the board. Do I hear a second? I have a second. Motion by Commissioner McLemore, second by Mr. Smiley. Is any further discussion, anyone in the audience have any input here or anything they'd like, or we go to the vote? All right, and the opposition, opposition, motion passes, three and oh.
Okay. And I apologize just for the formalities. We just, like I said, the committee is an advisory committee. We've been through this process. Ultimately, it's a decision of this commission as to the services you're selecting for the county. You had asked earlier if one person versus Mr. Nelson versus the next. You all, as a commission, have now selected the services and the direction for solid waste management. Now, the next would be to actually look at the actual numbers and make your recommendations and selection from that. And Commissioner McLemore, I just wanted to note, you had indicated before about a $7 increase, I think you indicated, just for the seniors in your district. It ultimately comes out to be about $4.50 per month, and it's about $54 a year, the numbers that you were looking at.
Okay, who has the next lowest, who has the lowest bid on the next motion I need? Is it 2325?
If the commission would all direct their attention to the fourth column and the first two on the left side, which is subscription service only right now, you'll see the two numbers and compare them. You have 2757 versus 2325.
We're going, my motion is going to have to be Waste Pro then with the 2325.
Just for the commission, and I understand it's a motion, Mr. Chairman, if you want to get a second for discussion, I wanted to add an additional comment if I could.
There we go. Motion by Commissioner McLemore, second for discussion by Commissioner Smiley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With regards to the numbers that have been quoted, we have 90 days, obviously, to negotiate. You have 40 days left on your current contract. I offer that to you so that you know that the numbers that you're looking at, and Mr. Butler and the committee have also highlighted for you today, that currently you've recommended at 2325. In the contract that we negotiate, we will also include the single payer option down the road if the county elects to go that route. So right now, you're looking at 2325 as your motion. There'll also be a language in that contract that we negotiate that has the ability for the county in years to come to negotiate it lower and have that provision in there, so we can actually get the lower number. If the county chooses a different direction, puts it on the bill on an annual basis in the future.
Let me sit on that committee.
Yes, sir. Well, the number's right there in front of you, Commissioner, so it's $20.25.
$20.25, okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Smiley, you have a second for discussion. Second stand, okay. I have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion here with the board, anyone from the audience? Oh, opposition, motion passes, three and oh. Mr. Butler?
Mr. Chairman, we still have a little better than a month on our contract with Waste Management, and we'll be in conversation with them and also with Waste Pro, and try to make a seamless transition from one to the other. Hopefully, you know, the numbers can possibly come down if Waste Pro in either city or both cities were to get on board. That could even help our numbers better. And two, I think the most important part is in a year, or not this year, but years to come, if you could go to a single payer, then you could really get the number, you could drive that number down. The driving forces, instead of having, sending out 2,000 bills, 3,000 bills per month and try and get the money back, they send one bill out per month, and you can write the check, send it back. That's where you get the biggest price break.
2025, we let Commissioner McLemore address that, okay. Okay, anyway, that is on this. All right. I want to thank everyone this morning. We have one more item to address, and this time, it concerns primarily Mr. McLemore, I, with the River People, and the sheriff over here, and Mr. Nelson. Marshall, if you would, please come up to the podium and address the board. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, y'all have in front of y'all, I've run off some graphs to kind of show you what's happening with the river situation now and what we can expect in coming days. To start off with, Apalachicola, you can see they're going to take it up to close to 22 feet and kind of hold it there. And what they're doing, they're letting water out of the dam up there to keep the lake at a lower level with the water that's coming down from above. So on the Apalachicola side, you're going to see the water level go up and stay up. Also, your next two graphs are the Chipola, which is at Altham and at Mariana. You can see there that there's a lot of water in that system, too, and that it's going to be staying up for quite some time. So what we're going to have are these two water systems are going to converge up on the, we will hit the area, cutoff area. Also, on the fourth graph, you can see I put the Jim Woodruff Dam up there, and you can kind of see what kind of flows that they're looking at maintaining, and they're going to be keeping them up for quite some time. So the water level's going to be, be high for, you know, well, well past a week. And then the back two sheets, I've given you some historical data, just so you can look at and reference that in prior years. We're not looking at major flood at this time, but we are looking at having to deal with flood issues, especially along the Chipola River from the Dead Lakes all the way down to Howard's Creek. And I would like to ask the board, if you would, to issue a local state of emergency for the spring flood of 2014.
A move, Mr. Chairman.
A motion and a second. Any opposition, anyone from public? Nothing. Motion pass, three and oh.
And one other thing, I'd like to, the board to allow staff and to work with the attorney to develop policies to address authorization for issuing a local state of emergency as well as extending local states of emergency should the board be unavailable or will not be able to get a quorum.
All right, just simply, simple layman's terms, if we, three of us out of pocket, we hadn't fragmented that. Good deal. A motion, Commissioner Smiley, second by Commissioner McLemore. Any opposition to it, anyone from the audience? Motion pass, three and oh.
Any questions? Okay. Thanks, sir.
Carmen? We're going to have to go in the crawfish business, because we can't pinch a river stew.
We're already in that business.
All right, thank everyone for coming out. And anyway, hey, Carmen.